Yalimahdat, everyone. It's so nice to see so many of you join us for this particular session of Dr. Hashem's, all the way from Europe and from Africa, and certainly Canada and the US. Today is Monday, the 6th of September 2021, and it's 12:00 PM Pacific Standard Time and 8:00 PM British Standard Time. And then, of course, for the rest of Europe, it is 9:00 PM in that time zone. So, welcome again. We shall begin with this special session on questions and answers, and go from there. So let me invite Dr. H to join us and to begin this session with actually a video on Maulana Hazimah's visit to Lisbon and his speech, if you like, about establishing the divan of the Imamah at in Lisbon.
May all of you, as well as all of us, pay tribute to your highness and your family on this historic day, and be welcome to Portugal. I feel... I feel I'm sure that Portugal became your home forever. On behalf of the Jamaat, my family and myself, I want to thank His Excellency the President for sharing this time with us. This morning, I signed an instrument designating the seat of the Ismaili Imamah here in Lisbon, which I have decided to name as the divan of the Ismaili Imamah. This historic step to further strengthen the capacities of the Imamah's institutions to better serve the Jamaat's needs. I express my gratitude to the government and people of Portugal for inviting me to establish this seat here. The establishment of this seat provides that the Imamah and the government will continue to work together to enhance the understanding among Muslims and non-Muslims and contribute to peace and stability around the world. We now have, ummuhlilah, Portugal as our partner.
Well, there you go. It brings tears to one's eyes. It's beautiful to see the whole Rani family there for this very, very historic event. And it is an amazing moment in Ismaili history for us at this time in 2000, in this century, to set up the Imamah, the divan, as he calls it, the divan of the Ismaili Imamah in Portugal. Very, very historic moment, and it brings a lot of pleasure and happiness and honor to all of us Ismailis, as Hazimah establishes this. Okay, it's time for... to go to Dr. H, and we can begin our session on the questions and answers for today. So, Dr. H, if you could unmute yourself and come on. There you are. Yalimahdat, Dr. H. Good morning to you.
Yalimahdat, Zaher. Yalimahdat to all the team members and to all the participants today. Welcome. It's Labor Day in this part of the world, as it is, I think, in the United States. There may be holidays in other parts of the world, but it's our pleasure to be here today.
Well, it's lovely to have you again, Dr. H. And this again is a very special moment for us in terms of the sessions that we do, because, as you know, you inspire a lot of people in terms of wanting to know about our faith, and that arises, raises questions that we sometimes don't cover in our normal session, but we do questions that come into our chat through raised hands and, of course, by email. We compile them together. So today, we'll begin this session with some of these questions. And the first question, Dr. H, that's come our way that we've compiled together, it's a combination, actually, and it has to do with our dua and our dason. So here, Dr. H, is a question that came to us by email, and it says, "May we have the meaning and importance and benefits, etc., of dua, which we pray three times a day? And also, if you can, give us a meaning of some of our old dua, if you can, and then maybe talk about dason? And this was a question that came to us from Shreeda Karmali. The dason question was, how can we convince an individual that the benefit of giving the dason or the consequences of not giving the dason? So, Dr. H, if you can address that as a combined question, it's yours.
Thank you, Zaher, for those two very foundational and important questions. As we begin, I just want to mention a couple of things. Very, very happy birthday to Yasmin Parbatani. It was her birthday yesterday. And as you know, Yasmin is part of our team. And many happy returns. And Mullah bless you with good health, long life, and barakah, strength of faith, and Mullah fulfill all your wishes on this happy day of your birthday.
I mean, thank you so much.
Likewise, I'm sure there are many people who might have a birthday on this day. The prayers goes to you too. And special gratitude to Zaher for being here today on the holiday, to Nayab for the beautiful slide she generates every week, and for all the team members who are so, so, so supportive, and without whom these sessions would not be possible. I am personally grateful to them, and I especially pray, may our beloved Imam accept their contribution as their seerah, and may they and the family be rewarded with happiness, barakah, good health, and fulfillment of all their wishes. This is my sincere prayer. So, as we begin today's session, a couple of prefatory remarks I'd like to make before I get into the answer of the two questions that Zaher asked. Something that I always like to mention to our participants, and that is, remember, we belong to a tariqah in Islam that is guided by a living Imam. A living Imam. I underline the word "living." And in that context, we are reminded about that every single time when we enter Jamaat Kana. And when we say, "Gurghat Jamaat Haizandah," the notion of Haizandah refers to the notion of a living, present, manifest Imam. In a more spiritual context, it refers to that Allah's Noor is manifest on earth. Please say salawat, Allahu ma'sali Allah, Muhammadin wa ala Muhammad. And always remember, that is a very important connection to the verse, the Surah Noor, in the Holy Quran, when Allah says, Allah himself says, Allah says, Allah is the light of the heavens and the earth. It may be easy for us to think about heaven, but it's even easier when you think about earth, because this is where we live. And Allah says, "I am the Noor. I am the Noor." Allah hu Noor. I am the Noor of the heavens and the earth. In our tariqah, that recognition, that notion of identification with the concept of Noor, which is very, very special and specific to our tariqah, is identified with the holy manifestation of the Imam of the time. Please say salawat, Allahu ma'sali Allah, Muhammadin wa ala Muhammad. So, when we refer to our tariqah, when we refer to our practice in Islam, when we say, when our beloved Imam tells us, Shia-imami Ismaili Islam, it's very specific. It's very precise. It's to the point. It is very well defined, and only the Imam of the time can give that definition. And that is, our tariqah in Islam, it's the path of enlightenment to the holy Noor of Allah Almighty. Please say salawat, Allahu ma'sali Allah, Muhammadin wa ala Muhammad. To put it simply for everyone, anytime we speak about our tariqah in Islam, now remember, there are other tariqas which we understand and respect, but this is our tariqah. And in our tariqah in Islam, our tariqah, the Shia-imami Ismaili Islam, means Noor. That's it. Everything else, everything else is peripheral to the notion of Noor. And that Noor, as Allah says in the Holy Quran, that He is it. Allah says, "I guide to my Noor, whom I am pleased with." Allah guides to His light, whom He pleases. We are so fortunate, and we should be grateful. Every single breath that we take, every single breath, we should take it in prostration, in recognition, in humility, that we have a living Imam of the time, who is Allah's Noor, and that Noor is guiding us in everything that has to do with the path of our spiritual enlightenment and our material progress and material benefit and material growth and the balance that we have been asked to maintain between Din, the faith, and Dunya, the world. I'm being very specific about it because I want to continue to emphasize as much as I can my objective in responding today in the case of questions and answers and at other time when I'm giving my lectures is to be as specific as I can on matters that are related to the understanding of our tariqah, the Shia-imami Ismaili Islam. And in that context, when we ask questions, that is my objective to see how does our tariqah seeks to respond to some of these questions that we have related to our practice and to our understanding. Having said that, let me here bring something of a transition that I think is important because it is something that helps us understand other matters. One day, a man came to ask Sri Gautam Buddha. You know who I'm referring to. What in the Western world, they call him Buddha, or they call him Sri Gautam Buddha, or they call him Sakhi Amuni. He has different names. But this prophet, this Shri Gautam Buddha is recognized in Islam as one of the prophets of Allah Almighty. And he came 500 years BCE. So, 500 years before the time of Isa Nabi, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. One day, a man came to him and said, he says to Sri Gautam Buddha, he says, "I want happiness." And Gautam Buddha, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, said to him, now before I give the answer, I want you to make sure we are on the same page. Look at what this person asked. He says, "I want happiness." So there was three words there. "I want happiness." So Gautam Buddha says, first, remove the "I." What does that mean? It means Gautam Buddha says, that is the ego. Remove the ego. Remove the Ankar. So that was the first thing that he said. Then he said, remove the word "want." Now remember the sentence, "I want happiness." So he said, remove the "I", which is the ego, then now remove the word "want." "Want" means desire. See now what is left? Only the word "happiness." Are you following this spiritual logic? The answer Gautam Buddha gave to this man, if you want happiness, remove your ego, remove your desire, what will be left will be happiness. And that is so true. And one can expand, one could expand, add infinitum, what this means. Perhaps, let me give you the punchline so you have less to search in that. When you remove the ego and you remove the desire, then what happens? Everything that your mind stands for is gone. What is left? The soul, the spirit, the ruh, the atma, and the happiness which the human being seeks should be the happiness that comes from the spirit, from the ruh, from the atma, not happiness that comes into the mind through desire, because that happiness comes and goes. It shifts. It's high and low. But the one that comes from the soul, happiness that's generated from the spirit is permanent. It doesn't go. It doesn't get compromised. That is one of the reasons, at least if you can put it into that context, our beloved Imam says to us, "He who forgets the soul is unhappy." Do you see the correlation? In other words, he who remembers the soul or he who works for the soul, towards the soul, he who does not forget the soul, those are the one who actually and eventually seeks and gains this happiness. So what a beautiful answer that Sri Gautam Buddha gave. And if you are into that league of wanting happiness, then remove your ego, remove all your desires, and what will be left is the spirit, the soul, and that indeed will radiate and will bring the kind of happiness that we call spiritual happiness. And you all know, material happiness comes and go, may or may not be there, but spiritual happiness is irreplaceable. Well, on that note, the question which was posed by Zaher are very relevant to make the connection with this notion of happiness. And I will say undoubtedly, it will be spiritual happiness and worldly happiness. So let's see how. So the question, there were two different people who asked a question, but since they are related, we have combined the questions. The first one had to do with dua and the second had to do with dason. How amazing. These are the absolute fundamentals of our tariqah and indeed that in Islam. So let me begin with the concept of dason first, because the question was, how do you convince somebody about dason? Roughly speaking. And what are the consequences of giving or not giving dason? Now, let me here add the notion of dason, the word "dason" we use in our tariqah, in our practice. It is the same concept in the Holy Quran that Allah speaks of, kums, ushrAllah, and zakat. What does that mean? Kums means one-fifth, 20%. UshrAllah means one-tenth, 10%. And zakat is usually counted as 2.5%. Now, these three things in the Quran, kums, zakat, ushrAllah, if you put them together, you bundle them together, in our tariqah, we call that dason. There is no difference. And it is the holy Imam who defines for us the practice. Now, let me go a little further than that. You can pick up any revelation that has come in the face of this world, any scripture that has come in the face of this world, or you can take the name of any prophet who has come into this world. And the first and foremost principle that these prophets established, and I need to remind you, all 124,000 prophets who came in the face of this world, the principle they established was exactly this, that what we in our tariqah call dason and the concept of prayer or dua that we say in our tariqah. There isn't a single religion on the face of this planet that does not include this concept generally known as tithing and then prayers. Every religion has it in different forms, in different shape, in different definition, in different perspective, but it is there. So it doesn't matter what religion you pick. You will find every one of these religions define that you cannot, as a believer, into that faith, be a true believer without giving and without praying. It's fundamental. It's a divine law. It's a divine command. Now you might say, where did that command arise? So let me give you the perspective that our tariqah gives us in Islam, in the Quran, in the practice of the Shia-imami Ismaili Islam. But this practice of dason or zakat and kums and ushrAllah being universal in perspective has the same answer. And what is that? I will paraphrase our holy peers, but even in the Holy Quran, you will find this link. And what does it say? The first thing, the very first law, the very first divine command that was established, what was it? That was the divine command of submitting and giving dason. When was that established? It was established before the creation of the world, before the creation of the physical universe, when everything was still in its spiritual form. The first divine law before the creation of the universe was the law of dason. Now, I'm not going to go into the fine structures of the answer because it's a Q&amp;A session, but this being so fundamental, dason and dua, that I have to take the time to make sure I respond to at least the bare minimum understanding and degree and give you the appropriate reference so that a question is answered. The first law, as I mentioned, the first divine command before the creation of the universe was dason. Now you may wonder in what form dason existed, because when we speak about dason, we speak about tithing, we speak about zakat and so on, immediately, in people's mind, the notion of money comes into being. Yes, that is a form for today, but dason that was existed from the beginning of creation took a different form. And the first dason that was ever submitted, that was the dason given by Holy Prophet Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, that was given in the form of a prostration, in the form of a submission to the divine will. Let me give you a little bit of information so that you know why. When Allah Almighty, when Allah's Noor brought creation into existence and the purpose of bringing creation into existence, as you know, the Hadith on creation, when Allah says, "I was a hidden treasure. I wanted to become known. I wanted to become manifest. So I created mankind so that while knowledge about me..." In that respect, when Allah brought creation into existence, and remember the Hadith on creation, "Oh, Muhammad, had it not been for you, I would not have brought creation into existence. Had it not been for Ali, I would not have created you." So I would like you to remember these things. Now, when Prophet Muhammad, meaning when the Noor of Nabu At was asked to bring creation into existence by Allah's command, what happened? The whole creation came into being, but that creation was devoid of divine support to sustain that creation. So Allah Almighty said to the Holy Prophet, "If you would like me to sustain, maintain, guide, and basically keep this creation every instant of its existence, meaning create, renew, sustain, maintain, direct, and everything else that is required in creation, then Allah says to the Holy Prophet, then submit yourself. Submit yourself to my will." And that was the act of prostration. And when Allah says, "submission, prostrate to the divine will," that was the first dason. Allah says to the Holy Prophet, "Give the Amanat, give the Dasan. Then I will in that creation submit, sustain, guide, maintain, renew, do whatever is necessary to do to keep this creation stable and balanced. And all the souls that will come in and all the souls that will be seeking salvation will indeed be the ones who subscribe to this prostration." Now, where did that happen? Again, cut a very long story short. Do you remember when Allah Almighty, as it says in the Quran, He made Adam with His own two hands? Allah made Adam with His own two hands and He made it out of that clay. So Adam was made up of clay, meaning Adam is the symbolism of the human being. And in Adam, Allah breded his spirit. And that became the symbol of the human creation. And what did Allah say when He breded His Nuh into that Adam? He asked all the angels that were in creation to do what? To prostrate, to submit to that Adam. Except one angel did not, and that was Iblis, and you know the story. The fact is this, try to make the connection. When Iblis did not submit, when Iblis refused to prostrate, that was the indication of those who do not give the Dasan. Those who refused to submit to the divine will as it was intended in the very beginning of creation. The point I'm trying to make is this, for you to look at the parallel. Prostration from the Prophet in the beginning of creation, before the physical universe. Prostration of all the angels in front of Allah's creation, before the creation of the universe. You can see the two acts of prostration. So that act of prostration was the first Dasan. Iblis that did not prostrate means he refused to give the Dasan. And what happened to him? He was excommunicated and became Shaytan, the devil. Now, couple of important points. Remember what is the meaning of Islam? Islam means from the root Salama. Two things. One, it means peace, the other one, submission. He who submits himself to the divine will gains peace. Do you see, I want you to make sure you understand this thing very clearly, that this notion of submission in a word, meaning of Islam, the very root, the very foundation in Islam, from its root meaning. Islam means submission. Submission to the divine will. Now trace back. That submission to the divine will means Dasan, simply put. Do you see, it's right there, right there in the beginning. It's not at the end, it's not in the middle, it's right there in the beginning. This is the reason why. In more than three-hundred places in the Quran, you will find the notion of Dasan and prayer, Dua. In the Quranic term, Zakat and Salaah combined together. Wa Salaatu wa Zakat. In more than three-hundred places. Now, if you have understood this basics, and I know there are lots of things in between, but as I said, because it's foundational, I want to make sure there is no misunderstanding. I mentioned to you that this very notion that has come before the time of creation is also mentioned in the Quran. But before I go there, let me also mention this. This promise that the human being gave to the Creator about submitting the Dasan in the Quranic language is known as Amanat. Amanat, meaning a trust. Also, please be aware the human being made this promise in the spiritual realm, when he was in his spiritual form. And in order to remind the human being about this fundamental process of ensuring that the human being does not forget this covenant, this promise, this agreement made in the spiritual world before the human being is born into the material world. Guess what? That human being in the womb of the mother renews that promise, which is the promise that is known as that Bayat made in the womb of the mother. For many, this may sound strange that we are talking about the womb of the mother and the life inside the womb of the mother making this promise. Yes, indeed it is, it is. And the human being to be born when still in the womb of the mother, that human being, according to the teachings of our holy peers, is completely awake, conscious and specifically knowledgeable in the womb of the mother. And in the sense of being completely knowledgeable and awake, that soul that is in the fetus in the womb of the mother makes a promise, makes a promise to the divine that Maula, "I will not forget and I promise to give and submit my Dasan as I made the promise in the spiritual realm, in this spiritual world." And number two, I make the promise of following your Faraons. And number three, I make the promise of not slandering or doing Ninda of anyone. These are the three promises we made in the womb of the mother. But the first one was related to the Dasan. Do you see where this goes? So that you understand, this isn't just a matter of form, it's a matter of principle. It's a matter of understanding where the foundation of it goes to. This is why Dasan is considered the foundation of the faith. Now, let me give you the Quranic reference. The Quranic reference, which is in our Dua, in the fifth part of Dua, do you remember it? It is Surah number eight and verse twenty-seven of the Holy Quran, Surah Anfal. What does it say? In that Ayat of the Quran, which we recite in the fifth part of the Dua, where in Arabic it says, "Amanatikum." "All ye who believe, do not betray Allah and the Apostle and do not betray your trust while you know, you know the consequences." Now, as I said, uh, one can go ad infinitum describing. The key, the key point here is trust, Amanat. Amanatikum. Do not betray the trust. Very severe warning from Allah Almighty. Now, in our Ta'ika, this concept has been amply explained. For those of you who may have the reference, there is a book, Pakazi Norman, The Code of Conduct for the Followers of the Imam. Look into that book, into the chapter of what is due to the Imam from the true believers. There is an amazing, beautiful description. I don't have the luxury of time today to go into those details, but I can tell you this. Sometime in the very near future, I am going, I am going to speak on the concept of Dasan as expounded in other traditions, in Islam and in our Ta'ika. But for the purpose of today, because the question also stated, what are the consequences? So let me read before you the teachings of our holy Imam and the holy peer from the Holy Pandiat. On page forty-eight of Holy Pandiat Javan Mardi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. How is that explained? Now remember the question, what are the consequences if you do? What are the consequences if you don't? So I want to read it to you, then you, in your own way, you can try to interpret it and understand. Please say Salwa, Allahumma Salihallah. Muhammedin Wa Ale Muhammad. So our beloved Imams, in our spiritual teachings and our holy peers in our spiritual teachings, mentions, and I'm quoting, page forty-eight. "The first duty which the believer must discharge..." Let me stop right here. Do you see the sentence? "The first duty, not second, not third, the first, Dasan comes first, the first duty." "The first duty which the believer must discharge is to see that what he eats and what he closes himself with are clean, lawful to him and legitimate for his use. The lawfulness of such matters consists in this. You must faithfully and exactly compute in full all your income and all that comes to you and set aside, set aside the Dasan or the Tith." "Set aside the Dasan or the Tith of this, which is the duty Maliwajbah on it and deliver it faithfully, in full and in all sincerity to the treasury of the Imam of the time, who is the king of this world and the Hereafter. And you must do everything to ensure that it may reach him in full." I underline, "in full." Beware, beware of reducing the amount of that duty. This implies many important meanings and affects endless blessings. Now listen to this. "By paying that, you will rise high in your own esteem. By not paying it, you will remain in the valley of despair. If you pay it, your worship, meaning your Ibadah, your Dua, your prayers, by paying it, your worship will be accepted. And if you do not, it will find no acceptance. Because worship, meaning Dua, Banji, Ibadah, Tasbih and so on, because worship is acceptable only, only if what you eat, what you close yourself with are clean and lawful to you." That is to say, if you recognize the Imam of your time, paying correctly a Dasan unto him, then only the food you eat will be lawful to you, meaning Halal. And the dress which you close yourself with will also be lawful to you, meaning Halal. Then only, remember this and underline this. Then only, all of the forms of devotion will be accepted. Please say Salwa, Allahumma Salihallah, Muhammedin Wa Ale Muhammad. Did it make sense? Do you see why this is the foundation of faith and all the faiths? So always put this into perspective, because without this foundation, even me speaking about our Ta'ika in as humble as I can would be useless. Yes, Sahir?
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. H. I'm glad you spent a whole bunch of time on this very important question, because it is foundational. Dasan and Dua getting together. Um, and I think you're right, later on in our sessions, we could do in two hours on and expanding on Dasan. And, and the book that you mentioned really lays out the code for us. So Dr. H, I think you, you've covered that question into some depth. And if it's okay, we can move on to the next one, do you think, or?
If I can just add some, a few words on the notion of the Dua.
Sure.
Because the question of Dua had a similar slot about the importance and so on. So I will do it very quickly. So I bring to your attention the quotation of Imam Sultan, Machtala Aisyam, from the memoirs. And in the memoirs, our beloved forty-eight Imam says, "Prayer is a daily necessity. It is, prayer is a daily necessity, a direct communication of the spark with the universal flame." Daily necessity. Why? A communicate, a direct communication of the spark with the universal flame. Now, before I go expanding on that a little bit, let me quote to you some Ayats of the Quran. On chapter forty, verse sixty, Allah says regarding Dua. "And your Lord has said," and I quote, "And your Lord has said, 'Pray unto Me and I will hear your prayer.'" Another quotation. Surah number two, verse one-eighty-six. Allah says, "And when my servants question thee concerning Me, then surely I am nigh. I answer the prayer of the supplicant when he cries unto Me. So let them hear my call and let them trust in Me in order that they may be led aright." This is, these are verses from the Quran. Look, each one of these verses can be explained even at a greater length. But you can send your request on the chat if you like later, that if you would like something like that explained a little further. Then, the Holy Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam says, "Dua is a weapon. Dua is a weapon of a believer, the pillar of religion and the lamp that lights up the sky and the earth." Imagine that. The Holy Prophet says, "Dua is the essence of worship." The Holy Prophet says, "Dua is beneficial." Listen to this Hadith, very important Hadith. "Dua is beneficial in not only removing the troubles and misfortunes which have already descended, but also, but also in those which have not yet arrived." Meaning preventing those that have not yet arrived. Nothing can put off faith except Dua. You understand this sentence? Meaning if by virtue of your own negative action, there was going to be a disaster, a calamity, a problem. But the fact you say Dua, that calamity, that disaster, that result can be removed, can be changed, can be put off. So the Holy Prophet said... So the Holy Prophet said, "Make Dua compulsory upon you." Okay? Maula Ali, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam says, "In the eyes of Allah, the most favorable deed on earth is Dua." No other favorable deed is there, it is Dua. Imam Muhammad al-Baqir, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said, "Nothing is dearer to Allah than asking from Him and soliciting whatsoever He possesses." Some of these beautiful quote that I've quoted before you, they were identified by missionary Kamaluddin of Pakistan. Amazing in many of the works that he has published. So I'm giving, I'm giving that reference to you and giving credit to him where it is due for having identified these quotations. Of course, they are there, but he made it together, which is very important. Now, there are many such quotations in the Quran, in the Hadith, there are, you are well familiar already with the quotations and with the teachings of the holy Imam of the time, how important he said Dua is. But let me conclude here. And because a couple of things I need to say that are fundamentally important. Remember, even our holy peers, now I'm going to give you just one quotation, and I'll mention the others. In one of the Ginans, the holy peer says, and, and of course, this is in the Ginan of Holy Peer Shams, the fourteen jewels. In that Ginan, the holy peer quotes the ten jewels, the tenth jewel. And what does he say? "Aji, dasmo ratan, to tran vakhat dua." "Dasmo ratan, to tran vakhat dua, ma chukore, Moomen bhai, to aapne sahib jee, karri dason sahi farmai." Simply meaning, "Oh, Mo'min's, oh, true believers, the tenth jewel is that do not miss Dua three times a day and the Lord has ordained to offer Dason correctly." Do you see in this one verse, Dason and Dua have been put together as it is in the Quran? Was zakatu, was salatu. Simply again to bring this thing to your memory. Now, every day, wherever in, wherever it is being recited, when we recite before Dua, the few verses of Anantakaro, all those five verses are related to the importance of Dua in their different spiritual realm and level. So, why is it, the question was, there is this necessity? Remember, as our beloved Imam explained, it is a daily necessity, a direct communication of the spark, meaning the, the human spirit, the human soul, with the universal flame, meaning its origin. The question arises, how does a human being communicate with his creator? And the simple answer is Dua. That is the reason why we are expected to know not only the Dua, but its meaning, word-to-word meaning, and understand the metaphysical, the spiritual implications and meaning, what the Dua actually means. So let me give you one or two quotations here, which I think you will understand from a different perspective. Do you know, do you know that in a mystical, in a spiritual context, which indeed what our Tarika is? Because we refer to the Baathin. In the Baathin, the Dua for the believers, the Dua is that prayer. It is that prayer, which is an invitation from the Creator. It is an invitation from Allah Almighty, an invitation to the divine presence. Try to put that into your mind when you go to Jumat Kana. And we go to Jumat Kana for Dua and other ceremonies. It is indeed an invitation to the divine presence. Therefore, mystics tell us that missing the prayer, missing the Dua is its own punishment. It is like missing a banquet. And in this case, of course, a banquet for the soul, a spiritual banquet. And then, listen to this beautiful Hadith of the Holy Prophet. And he says, during Dua, this is a Hadith of the Prophet, during Dua, during prayer, Allah lifts the veils and opens the gates of the invisible so that His servants, the Mo'min, the true believer, is standing in front of Him. The prayer creates a secret connection between the one praying and the one prayed to. Prayer, the Holy Prophet said, is a threshold at the entrance to God's reality. Are you following this Hadith? Sandhyavera matkui chuko, eche dinni bari. This is a direct connection of this Hadith with that verse of the Ginan. And when the Holy Prophet says, "The prayer creates a connection, a secret connection between the one praying, the Morid, the believer, and the one prayed to." That is, we are praying to Maula. And this is the meaning, the direct communication of the spark with the universal flame. A final note. In our day-to-day living, when we spend all these hours in our material quest, material realm, material existence, material growth, material wants and desire, it is very easy for the mind of the human being to get so engrossed materially that we tend to forget our, our spiritual part. Therefore, the Imam reminds us of the balance between Din and Dunya, the material and the spiritual. But deliberately, when it comes to the three Dua's, deliberately, we interrupt our material world. We say, "No, it's Dua time." We interrupt whatever we do materially. Let's go to Jumat Kana. Wherever we may be, in our business, in the car, at, in the house, it's Dua time. We interrupt everything. And we say, "This is a time to remember my Maula. This is a time for me to speak directly to my Creator, my Sustainer, my Maintainer, to express my gratitude, to express my shukrana, my prostration, and recognize that everything that I have, everything that I do, everything that happens is from my Creator." This, in short, is why we necessarily say our Dua and why the Dua is indeed so foundational. And remember, link this to what I just said about the Dason. First comes the Dason, then comes Dua. If the Dason is there, that Dua will be accepted.
That's incredible, Dr. H. You know, I hear you all the time, but this is the first time that I see that you tying these three pieces together. First is the Dason, the prostration, the submission. And then the Dua is the way that we communicate with our Lord and pave the path to divinity. And that leads us to our next question, because the next question is, if you do your Dason, you do your Dua, and you stay with this mighty faith, then inside you is a yearning. The yearning starts to meet Him. And that yearning is based on love. So that leads it to, leads us to our next question, and it's about love. And it says, eventually, we all need love. Why love? How can we increase this love for our Maula? How can we preserve it? How we, how can we hold it? Especially during difficult times, which are COVID times perhaps, or emotional distress? How is it that we can park our anger and stay in love? That question couples with saying that love conquers all. But if that's true, why and how can we stay with this spiritual love? Physically, spiritually, mentally, and emotionally? This idea of yearning. So if you could address that, Dr. H.
This is indeed a very, very, very profound and important question about love. Because love is used, the word love, excuse me, and the concept of love is used in many different layers and many different dimension. And we can see that, we can see that, first of all, in the context of human physical existence. And in the human physical existence, you see, you see this notion of love in its multi-dimensional form. When you look at even the animal kingdom, what do you notice? Every animal, every animal, from the smallest to the largest, they express love to their own species and even sometime across species. And you can see, for example, when a bird gives birth to its own kind in a nest, when the egg cracks, how the mother bird goes out in search of food, picks up food and will feed the birds that are in the nest. And you have this example all across the animal kingdom. You will find younger animals suckling the milk, the breast of its mother, and so and so forth, you know what I mean? And you can also see the same manifestation when a baby is born and suckling the breast of its mother and where nutrition, life, comfort, and all of that is given to the baby through the mother's breast. You can see the correlate, that you can see the similarities. Just as a mother loves a child, in the same way you find younger, you find in the animal kingdom, and in fact, in other kingdoms too, the same concept of this loving bond or this idea of love that is so amazing to think, where do animals get this love from? How do they love their own species and the ones whom they give birth to? Like the human love, those whom, in this case, she who gives birth to, and the father's support of that love. Now, what's the point of all of this? The point I'm trying to make to you is this. This is a sign for the thinking human being. This is a sign for the human being who reflects. And what is he reflecting on? He's reflecting and he's seeing, everything in nature is connected with his love. When you have a human being loving a cat, a parrot, loving a dog, loving other animals that human beings might have, why do you have those dogs and cats and other animals? There is a bond, a bond we call love. And people love their pets, people love their cats and dogs. And look at the devotion that people show to them. They feed them, they bark them, they clean them, and everything else. And there is, even though amongst the lower species or the higher species, still that notion of love and that notion of bond. Now, we being human beings, being Allah's greatest creation, remember that? Man is Allah's greatest creation. And being Allah's greatest creation, what differentiates this creation than all others? Like the one I've just spoken to, it's the intellect. Nothing but the intellect, our beloved Imam tells us. Now, what is the connection of that intellect with love? So, it is a fundamental understanding from the human being. If you understand the expression that I often mention, that the intellect is the permanent presence of, is the permanent manifestation of the presence of the divine in the human microcosm. That means the human being, through his Akhl, he is able to come to the realization of the presence of the Creator within him. Because that intellect that he has is itself a manifestation of the divine. Now, all of you know that in all mystical tradition, when one speaks of love, it's always a, an element that is brought forward in relation to what is a connection between Allah's greatest creation, the human being, and the Creator himself, love. Why do you think that is so? And again, the question that Zahir asked, the two questions blended together. Did you know, did you know, the whole creation came into existence as an act of love? And this love was not something to be taken ordinarily. Meaning, before the actual creation came into being, Allah's Nuh took many, 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 many eons, millions and millions and millions and millions of years in the contemplation of creating the human being and the universe for the purpose of this human being. Remember the Hadith? "I was a hidden treasure. I wanted to become manifest. Therefore, I created, I brought human beings, humans into existence so they could acquire knowledge about me." That knowledge being spoken of is this love. Everything else is infused with that love, including what we call Ilma. Knowledge infused with love, but love is first. So, when you look at Allah's creation, remember Maulabapa said to us, "Try to use your education in understanding Allah's creation." This whole creation is a expression and manifestation of Allah's love. Love, love, I say again, love. And where is that love infused in the human being? Into his spirit, into his soul. That's why that love that is in the spirit, and this is what Zahir said, I'm using his words, which is actually true, it is that love in the spirit that exists, that yearns to go back to its source of origin, which is divine love. So there is divine love, there is human love. And that human love seeks to become one with the divine love. But in order for the human being But in order for the human being to achieve that status of love, he needs to go beyond human love. But you see, but you see, with the Creator's grace and mercy, a human being, a human being can get, can, can get a little, little taste of what that love is like. How does he get that taste? He gets that taste through the love of one human being for another. When one human being loves another human being, that in itself is a reflection, a very poor reflection, a small reflection of what is the permanent union with the divine. Now, I'm sure you are beginning to get some kind of idea that this notion of love is not one that can easily be explained in, you know, in my response today, but simply to give you a little bit of a fragment. Because there is a whole, there is a whole science of knowledge behind this notion of love that is given in our holy Ginnans, in the Fermanan, in the Holy Quran and in all mystical expression about love. And you can see when you read Rumi, when you read Shams Tabriz, when you read Hafiz, all of these great expressions are that of love. Now, how do I do that in, in responding to the question into this session? And you know, the best example that comes to my mind, at least from the standpoint of seeking to understand it, let's say, from an intellectual point of view, from an intellectual point of view, you may remember that sometime in the past, when we, when in my sessions, we invited certain uh individuals who were sharing with us their wisdom, their understanding, their, their search in, in, in the faith and were sharing with a certain jewel. There was one individual, Shabudin Bhai, who comes to our session. And I remember him when I once visited him. Shabudin Bhai opened up his diary of information which he collected over the years and pointed out, he says, you know, when you think about love, which, which is so mysterious, which is so abstract in many cases and of course concrete in many cases. And he gave a beautiful reference. And Shabudin Bhai, the Nani said, there are fourteen layers, fourteen dimension, fourteen levels of love. And in quoting, in giving that reference, he gave the connection that when you look at the love between a husband and wife, between a couple, between two human beings, you are probably at the sixth or seventh level. What about the others? Are you getting my point? I have to express my gratitude to Shabudin Bhai because that quotation, that expression that he made, opened up a path for me to research more into that area, which I, unfortunately, because of time today, I cannot go into all the details. But I can assure you at some point in time, when we come back to it, we will have that quote and we will also explore the deeper implication of love. So to answer the question today, you can see when I, when the question says, why love? Because everything in creation is an expression of love from the Creator, including the way we were created. When Allah created Adam, it was an expression of His love. When Allah breathed His spirit, His Noor into Adam, that was an expression of love. So that love that is infused in the human being is, if you like, part of its roots. And we connect with everything in the world with love. With the difference is this. Physical, material, Dunya we love is very, very limited. It comes and goes in measures. But spiritual love, love that is permanent, it comes from the soul. And that's where the real essence of love is, the soul. In the soul, when that love emanates from the soul, that love is so permanent, it never disappears, it never effaces, it never lightens up, it's always there. But material love comes and go. So you know, uh if someone is good to you today, you love them. If tomorrow they are not so good, you hate them. Was that love? Tell me, was that love? That you say to somebody today, I love you, but tomorrow you say, no, I don't love you today. That's not love, that's selfishness. That is serving one's own purpose because yesterday it served the purpose and today didn't serve the purpose. So we as human beings have to use our intellect to remember, we cannot make such judgment with the word love. Now, there is a whole, as I say, there is a whole science and art about the language of love. And I'm wondering to myself, will I have an opportunity to perhaps create some sessions related to that? All I can tell you, it is so amazingly enlightening, even to just go through the process of understanding the language, how this love is expressed by mystic in the poetical, into their uh singing, into their art forms and other ways to express the love of the Creator. And remember, in speaking about love, the amazing symbolism of the heart, which is always related to love, comes into focus. And we know that in a physical way to romantic love and of course love between human beings and going even further, the love for the divine. So we'll leave it at that, but I think I've sufficiently expressed that the uh why love? The few items that I gave you hopefully should help you move forward. But Insha Allah with Mollah's blessing, if possible down the road, I will offer a few, it, it will take a few lectures to go into this symbolism and what I'd like to say, the spiritual metaphysics of love. What is this language of love in mystical terms? I think it's fundamentally important. So the concept of love in, even in our Ginnan, it is absolutely incredible. So we will do that Insha Allah with Mollah's mercy and blessing. But let me here conclude by saying perhaps the most important sentence. And that is, the love and devotion to and for the Holy Imam is the pinnacle, the root, the basis of everything we can possibly imagine from the beginning of creation to the end. And remember, please remember, when we speak about love for the Imam, it's not only what comes out of our mouth and mind and heart, but that love that we are speaking about, the proof of that love for the Imam, the proof of that love, this is what Allah says in the Quran. The proof of that love for Allah Almighty is what? Your Dasan. Dasan, when we submit this Dasan, remember in the Dua what it says? When you submit this Dasan, where? In Jamat Kana, and you know where? That is the proof of your love and devotion to and for the Holy Imam, please say Salwa. Allahumma Salihallah, Muhammadin Wa Alaa Muhammad. So don't go wandering and don't go figuring out and says, well, my love for the Imam is this, this and that. Of course, it is all of that. But the foundation, the root of that love, the absolute proof to your akhl, to your, to your faith, to your Iman, is the Dasan that creates, that opens up the gate and that brings the radiance and illumination of that love in the heart and in the intellect. That's why it says, that's why our holy peers have taught us, the love of Ali, only, the love of Ali only obliterates all sins. Are you following how powerful this love is? Love of Ali, when you have this Ishq and Mohabbat of Ali, how true your Dasan. It brings the grace and blessing. All your guna, all your sins get vaporized, destroyed. This is the Barakah when we have the love of Maula in our heart, in our soul, in our intellect and in everything that we do.
Uh, thank you, Dr. H. That's uh, that's always astounding. I always learn something new every time. And um, I know we're already at an hour and a half plus. But I think maybe we can take one more question, you think that we have?
Yes.
For you, because I think it leads onto what we were talking about just now, about Maulana Ali and in terms of love and the Baathin. So the question here is that um in some of your lectures, we have said that Maulana Ali was in Baathin from the time of creation and he became Zahir at the time of Prophet Muhammad. And yet, uh, uh, yet history shows and also talks about Maulana Seif, Maulana Sham, Maulana Harun, Maulana Ismail, Maulana Abu Talib. Uh, they were all in the Zahir. So how can we explain this? That Maulana Ali was in Baathin till his physical birth? And yet we have these other Maulanas also existing uh in the Zahir? Could we look at that, uh, Dr. H., that question?
Uh, definitely we should. Uh, I am reminiscing in my mind. How long will I need to go back to that source, to the present? And uh, maybe let me say a few words and then with the option that at some point in time, that can be taken as an important question because it is something that requires a deeper treatment. Let me begin with this. Let me begin by bringing you back to the initial proposition. Now, remember, we are speaking about the manifestation of the Holy Noor. Okay, that is what is important. When we speak about Imamah, it means Noor, Allah's, Allah's Noor. So let's go to a point of beginning, then we can see where this comes to. Going back to the hadith in creation, hadith a Qudsi. Allah says, I was a hidden treasure and wanted to become manifest. Now, I want you to remain and retain and keep this in your memory, the word and wanted to become manifest. Okay? So go back to the hadith, this beginning hadith. I was a hidden treasure. I wanted to become manifest. So Allah says, so I created mankind in order that they may acquire knowledge of me. Then what happens? Many, many, many hundreds of billions of years in physical term passed when this expression came into being from Allah's Noor. Because when Allah, when this, when, when this expression says, so I want to see that we are on the same page, so we are not having a different language. In this hadith, when the Holy Prophet says that Allah speaks directly through him and Allah says, I was a hidden treasure. Who is this I? You know, when you say, I am so and so, you can say, oh, who am, who, who is this I? Here Allah says, I, I was a hidden treasure. Now, who is this I? And what is this hidden treasure? This I is Allah's Noor. The hidden treasure is Allah's Noor. So now, change, change the word into this hadith that says Allah's Noor. So if I change it for you, it says, Allah's Noor was a hidden treasure. Now we continue with the hadith. Allah's Noor was a hidden treasure. And Allah's Noor wanted to become manifest. Now, let's analyze this a little deeper. Allah's Noor was a hidden treasure. Meaning Allah's Noor was in the Baathin. Are you following me? Allah's Noor was in the Baathin. Then Allah's Noor says, I wanted to become Zahir, manifest. I was in Baathin, I was hidden. Now I want to become Zahir, I want to become manifest. So what did Allah do? Allah says, I created mankind in order that they may acquire knowledge of me, meaning my Noor. Now let's look at this hadith again in the context of using the word Allah's Noor. Now remember, before I go any further, go back to the Ayat in the Holy Quran. Allah who Noor was somehow what he was earth. I am the light of the heavens and the earth. Allah is the Noor of the heavens and the earth. Bear this in mind, right? Then we come back to the other one in a second. So if you go back and substitute the word Allah's Noor into this hadith, which is a hadith a Qudsi, means Allah himself is speaking. Allah's Noor was a hidden treasure. And Allah's Noor wanted to become Zahir, manifest. It was Baathin, it wants to become Zahir. So what did he do? He created mankind. Now is mankind Zahir or Baathin? It's Zahir. We live, we are mankind. We are living on this earth, planet earth, that is physical and we are in our physical being. That's why the Ayat of the Quran also says earth. In this interpretation, there are others. But into this meaning, it says earth, heaven and earth. I created mankind in order that they may acquire knowledge of my Noor. So what happens? What did Allah do for that purpose? Well, in the interest of time, I'm going to shorten my answer. Allah sent a hundred and twenty-four thousand prophets on the face of this planet. And all these prophets came in one shape or form to explain and describe who that manifestation was and is in their multifarious and multi-dimensional perspective. Now I know when I say multifarious and multi-dimensional, I know in my mind, I'm leaving you with some mystery there because I don't have the opportunity today to go into its very detail. But let me say this to you. Some of you may remember. Some of you may remember a statement that Imam Sultan Mamad Shal alaihissalam made. And I will just be selective into what I'm saying. And Imam Sultan Mamad Shal alaihissalam said, "When there was nothing on this earth except fish", when, I'm repeating, "when there was nothing, 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 nothing on this earth, except fish in the water", Allah stood witness, Allah stood witness in the form of that fish. Now I leave it to you to think, to reflect, to manifest in your own mind what that means. But remember, it speaks about making the Noor known. Now, one hundred and twenty-four thousand prophets came on the face of this planet to explain all of this, to declare all of this. What do I mean by that? The Noor of Allah was always there from the beginning. The moment physical creation came, I just gave you the example about that fish in the water. Is it not physical? You can see, from the earliest manifestation of life, Allah's Noor was present with His creation. In whichever form that creation was, Allah was always manifest. Then as that creation evolved, step by step by step by step, throughout evolution, Allah's Noor was always present until such time when the human being is asking, "What was the purpose of the creation of this world?" And this answer is given by the Holy Prophet and by the holy peers in our Ta'rikah, and says, "The purpose of creation was to make known", to make known what? That manifestation. Stop right there. Manifestation. You remember the Hadiths? "I was a hidden treasure. My Noor was hidden in the Batin. And I wanted to become known. I wanted to become manifest", right? To connect that word "manifest" with the word "manifest" here. The purpose of creation of the world was to make known that manifestation of the divine beauty and perfection who is in possession of all His attributes, right? Whatever Allah represents in His Noorani form, all His beauty and perfection and attributes that are possessed by that Noor wanted to become in the Zahir, the manifestation. And this is where, in the Dua, we are reminded when the Holy Prophet was told, "O Prophet, O Muhammad, bring to humanity the message we entrusted thee. And if you do not deliver this message, you will not fulfill thy mission." This was a divine command to the Holy Prophet about this manifestation. Though the Noor was always present physically with all the other Imams, which I don't have time to go into that spiritual history. But here, here, what's the difference then? Because the question mentions the name of, I know, who was the Imam during the time of Prophet Adam and Noah and Abraham and so on, right? So the Imams were there, in there. The Noor was there, if I can put it this way, in its, in its manifestation. But it was not known yet to mankind. It was known, but not to mankind. And this is the fundamental difference. Holy Prophet Muhammad sallallahu alaihi wasallam was Allah's final Prophet to come. Final message of Allah to the whole of mankind. And that final message with the final Prophet was, "O Prophet, bring to humanity, bring to humanity this message which we had entrusted thee." What was the message? To declare, finally declare Allah's wish that when He was in Batin, now He is in Zahir. And that Noor is in Zahir. It can be seen, it can be related to, it can be connected to. And that is the declaration of the Holy Imamat to the whole of mankind. Please say Salwa, Allahumma Salihallah, Muhammadin Wa Alaihi Wa Ahmadi. Because Imam is a living Imam, and he is Allah's Noor to us, and he is the manifest Noor. So I hope you can see this connection. As I said, I'm giving you just the very basics because there are so many things in between. But at least you can make the connection between the Hadiths of creation and what the Holy Prophet was ordered by the divine to declare to mankind.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. H. I think that's a really, a good turning point in terms of seeing how that third part in our Dua, the message really works. As always, you know, every question there, we could probably cover in an own session by itself. So I think, Dr. H., we're at that point, maybe that if you could, we had over three hundred and ten participants with us today, we still have over two ninety with us. If you can say Dua for us, we would really appreciate that.
May Mollah always be with every one of us, every step, every breath, in everything that we do.
Ameen.
May Mollah's grace and mercy prevail in all our actions, all our thoughts, in all our practice. May Mollah accept our prayers, our Ibadat. May Mollah accept everything that we seek to do for the improvement of our spiritual life. May that overspill into our material life. May Mollah bless us with good health. May Mollah bless you all with the strength of faith, with staunchness in your Dasan, with clear and spiritual understanding of your Dua daily.
Ameen.
May Mollah bless you with the realization of all your wishes, all your desire. May Mollah bless you with everything that you wish into this material world and your spiritual quest and your spiritual realm. May Mollah bless you with the understanding, the Hakikat of our faith. May Mollah give you knowledge of the Ginnans, of the Qasidahs, of the Mankabats, of the Masnavis. May Mollah bless everyone with wisdom of our Ta'rikah. May Mollah infuse love and affection in your heart so you may realize your spirituality with Him and the beauty of our faith. May Mollah's hand always be upon you all to guide you, to protect you, to keep you safe. And may Mollah be with everyone, every second, every moment, every breath that you take. May you feel His presence, and may Mollah's presence bring you Barakah and the realization and the fulfillment of all your wishes and all your aspiration and all your desires, particularly, particularly the balance Mollah seeks to give us between our Din and our Dunya, and to remain staunch and firm in the path of Siratul Mustaqim. Ameen. Thank you.
Ameen, Dr. H. And from me and all of us and all our participants and all our, the whole team at Dr. H., we'd like to share some Dua for you.
Ameen.
May Mollah bless you with good health.
Ameen.
Grant you and your family peace in your hearts.
Ameen.
May He bless you with special Barakah to continue to share this enormous knowledge with us.
Ameen.
May He give you continued strength to share this knowledge with us that will light up the paths to make connections to the Spirit for us.
Ameen.
May He grant you happiness, joy, peace and focus of mind and unity in your family.
Ameen.
May He reward you for all this incredible Sava you and your family do for our Jamat worldwide.
Ameen.
And may you bring us these words of wisdom, words of knowledge, words of bringing peace and words that open our heart. And so with this, may Mollah always be by your side and protect you.
Ameen.
So thank you very much, Dr. H., and thank you for all our participants. Again, again, we are very close to a time, and so we wanted to say thank to all our participants, especially Dr. H. So we from Vancouver would want to say goodbye. So I'm going to say goodbye to Dr. H. first. Thank you again for being with us. And as you leave us, some of our participants will also maybe want to chat, they can unmute themselves for the next couple of minutes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. H. And thank you all for joining us today.